Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Monday, April the 19th, 2021. It is a little different for us because we usually meet on Tuesday, but because of some League of Municipality meeting that we've had this week, originally scheduled for this week, which we can't do, we are doing it virtually all week, but we moved the council meeting sometime back to Monday. So glad you're with us tonight on a different night than we normally do, but we're glad to be a part of that. Welcome. We do have several things tonight going on, and as we normally start our meeting, we have a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance, and we'll do that in just a minute. Would like for you to keep in, certainly in your thoughts and prayers, continuing for all of us as we continue to move through COVID-19 and into hopefully times getting better and better. We're certainly glad, as tonight we have a part of our school with us tonight from High Brighton, and we're proud of them, and we'll be talking about that in a minute, but we'll pray for those as they continue their school year and back and being able to be back in school more than they have been before. So we will continue prayers for moving forward with that and for everyone who is, you know, struggling through this, we continue to keep you in our thoughts and prayers. Right now, before we do that, though, I'm going to have a roll call, let everyone know who is with us this evening, and I'll start with our council that's here with us tonight. Of course, I'm here as the mayor, Chrissy Thomas, our mayor pro temp, is here. Ike Perkins, council member John Beal, council member Ben Willis, council member Todd Purdue, council member with us. Our city attorney, TJ Rohr, is with us. City manager Scott Hildebrand is here, and our communications director Joshua Harris is here, and our director of public works, Jade Wright, is here with us in the room. I think I've got everybody. We'll be introducing everyone else that's with us in a minute. Now, let me call those that are not with us tonight. Council member Ralph Presswood, and I think Ralph is out of town. Council member David Stevens. David's probably still doing, involved in working at this point with taxes and everything. All right. Our city clerk, Shirley Cannon, and I think Shirley is probably with us on Zoom. Department heads, we'll start with our finance director, Donna Bean.
Here.
Thank you, Donna. Fire chief Ken Hare.
I'm here.
Thank you, sir. Economic development Main Street director Kaywin Horn.
I'm here.
Thank you. Our police chief, Brent Phelps.
Andy Wilson.
Our captain, Andy Wilson, is with us tonight.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Our Parks and Recreation Director Kenny Story.
I'm here.
Public Utilities Director Radford Thomas.
He's unmuted.
There he is. I can see him on there.
Yeah.
Our planning director, Jenny Wheelock.
I'm here.
Thank you very much. All right. We welcome you here, and we'll get started now. We will rise for please for a moment of silence and remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. We salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Tonight, we start with a very special recognition tonight, and I'm going to come down to the
podium, and we're going to meet our High Brighton men's soccer team and talk about their tremendous season and welcome them to our council meeting tonight. We are glad that you guys could be with us, and we have something that we'd like to present to you. And I know that we have the principal of High Brighton High School, Courtney Wright, is with us. Head coach Jim Blanton. Jim, that's welcome. Assistant coach.
Mark Henderson.
Mark, thank you. Mark, I know you. Just do a mark right there. And athletic director Derek Reeves is with us, and thank you, guys, for being there. And I'm going to let you introduce the guys you have. Jim, if you will, you will come up, and Mark, if you guys want to come up. We'll read the proclamation. Courtney and Derek, too, if y'all will come with us. First of all, we just want to say how proud of we are of you guys. It's, you did a monumental job in a very, very tough time, playing soccer, football, whatever it is during a COVID situation this year, and to compete the way that you did this year. I know you have a wonderful team and a wonderful group of guys that you'll be introducing in a few minutes to us, but we are very proud of you and what you accomplished. So I'm going to read this resolution and present it to you, and then I'm going to let you guys talk a little bit about it. You know, I've known Jim since he was about this big. It's hard to believe that Jim Blanton was ever that size, but I coached you when you played in early soccer, rec ball, and baseball, and all kinds of things. So we've known each other for a long time and really proud of watching Jim grow. Actually, you played with my son, Joe, at High Brighton, and you guys had some great soccer teams in those days as well. So you carried the tradition forward. Anyway, this is honoring our High Brighton High School men's 2021 soccer team, whereas the hard work, dedication, sportsmanship, and talent of the 2021 High Brighton men's soccer team led these student athletes to finish their season 18-1-0. And whereas the Panthers went undefeated 14-0 in the Northwestern Foothills 2A, where they won the conference championship for the third consecutive year. And whereas High Brighton's men's soccer won the Western Regional Championship for the first time since 1989, taking the team to their second appearance in a North Carolina High School Athletic Association Men's Soccer Title Game. And whereas the Panthers scored 122 goals and allowed only 13 goals all year with 14 shutouts in 19 games, and the team ranked 16th in the nation, 2nd overall in the state, and 1st in the 2A Division of North Carolina. And whereas winning the regional championship and playing in the state championship game brought honor and recognition to High Brighton High School on the local and state level. And whereas head coach Jim Blanton, the entire coaching staff, team, parents, the faculty, and the student body were an integral part in supporting the players and guiding the team to a victory all season long. Nowfor, therefore it being resolved that I, as mayor, and on behalf of the City of Lenore, City Council, and all of our citizens do hereby recognize and congratulate the 2021 High Brighton High School Panthers men's soccer team on their successful season, their Western Regional Championship victory, and their journey to the 2021 State Championship Game this the 19th day of April 2021. Jim, congratulations. Very proud of you guys.
Thank you very much. It's been an honor to coach at High Brighton these number of years I've been there, 18 years, I guess. As a former player at High Brighton High School and a graduate of High Brighton High School and growing up in Lenore, it's, it was my dream to come back and be able to try to give a little bit of some of the things I learned from this guy as a coach. This guy coached me, too, when I was a young kid, you know, growing up in a home where there was no father and hoping to give back a little bit like this. It's been tremendous to be able to do this, to be able to just coach these young men because there's not a finer group of young people than the ones that I get to coach every single day and the people I work with, my coaching staff. Mark Henderson's here. He was one of my coaches when I played soccer in high school. He's been around that long at High Brighton. Scott Frankamott, Trevor Allen, and then the principal that we have is tremendous. She loves the kids. She works hard for the kids, and everything she does is all about those kids, and nobody loves them more than she does. Our athletic director is one of the greatest men you'll ever meet, and he loses sleep all day, every day, working hard for these kids and doing everything he can for these kids as well. And I couldn't be more proud to be a part of what High Brighton High School athletics, academics, and everything else puts forward. My players that I want to introduce tonight, this is just a small group of the players, and I'll have them come up each, but these are my captains and the leaders of my team, and I'll have them come up. And the first one is Simon Hawkins, Mike Waters, David Frankies, and Alan Mesa. And I just want to congratulate them on this tremendous effort and being, you know, tremendous people on and off the field and being a great representation of High Brighton High School and Lenore at all times and everything that they do. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jim.
I just want to say that it is a privilege and an honor to work at High Brighton High School. And what Coach Blanton said about these young men, it's not just on the soccer field. It is on and off the field. These young men carry themselves, they respect everyone that they encounter, they are wonderful, kind, mannerly, you know, saying thank you to me every time I hold the door for them. But I brought my phone in because I wanted to share with you guys a message that was sent to us. After the state championship game, one of the players for Croatan, their mom, sent Coach Reeves an email, and it made me tear up when Coach Reeves shared it with us. And I'll just kind of summarize what she said, but she said that our boys played one heck of a game, that they were very kind and respectful and gracious even though they didn't win the game. Of course, they did go into overtime, they did a great job on the field, but also that our fans were respectful and basically that we were the epitome of sportsmanship and that even though they'd never heard of High Brighton High School, they will never forget playing High Brighton High School in 2021. And that's just a summary of what she said, but it really touched me because it's what you do in sports, it prepares you for life. You know, they learn about teamwork and things that are going to carry them for the rest of their lives, and so it just shows us that not only are they good athletes, but they're great men. So thank you, Coach Blanton, Coach Henderson, and Coach Reeves, and thank you.
You're welcome.
And I also told them, they look better than me. I said, "Boys, y'all are making me look bad." I mean, look how sharp they are.
Coach Reeves, you want to add anything? Coach is A.D.
Just in closing up, the one thing, I've been here, had the pleasure of doing this three times now with some teams that we've had recently, and not that all of our teams don't exhibit this, but it's just funny that the common denominator is what you see in just the four guys that are here behind us is the dedication and the work ethic, but the sportsmanship, the attitude, and the behavior of them. And they're just great examples of what student athletes are here in Caldwell County and here in Lenore, and I just couldn't be more proud of them, and I'm just thankful for everything that Coach Blanton does for them every day. Thank you.
Let's put a picture with everybody if we can. Congratulations, guys. We'll go right over here and follow.
Congratulations.
Michael Karaki, you start there.
I'm sure everybody's smiling.
Smile, guys.
Smile, big.
One, two, three.
Thank you, guys, very much.
You're a Carolina Christian. I know your weight.
I need somebody after I have a speech at this council.
Good job.
Thank you, guys. Big with us.
Listen here now. Don't be hating.
There it is.
We're terrible, but we're nice.
We're very honored to have them with us tonight. It was a great season for them. Our football team also at High Brighton had a great season. Unfortunately, that ended this past Friday night, 13-12 loss to a tough team from Burns, and, you know, those kind of things happen. But I tell you, to perform the way all of our teams have during this time during COVID is just amazing that they have been able to keep things going and be as work like they have and try to stay healthy and all the things they were doing. So it's been a tough time, but it's been great that we've had, we have three teams in the playoffs, I think, in this area, and that was unfortunately, we all kind of went out Friday night, but that happens, and, but anyway, they'll all be back and hopefully they at least got to have a season during this very tough time. So very proud of what the soccer team, football team, and other teams all did this year. So our congratulations to all. Okay, we'll move on then to our, we do not have matters scheduled for public hearing this evening, so we'll move to our consent agenda items, which consists of minutes of our city council meeting of Tuesday, April 6, 2021. Item B is an authorizing resolution. This is a lease agreement. A portion of the parking lot located at 601 West Avenue, that's behind the Lenore Fire Department, will be leased to the North Carolina State Employees Credit Union for the purpose of an ATM. The lease will be for a term of five years at an annual rate of $1,200. Note, the legal ad was published on Wednesday, March 17, meeting the 30-day notice requirement for the rental or lease of city-owned property. Item C is the resolution that we just read for, presented to High Brighton High School Soccer Team, congratulating them for being the runner-up state champions of the North Carolina High School Athletic Association 2A Soccer Championship. So I'll present those to you for your consent agenda. Any discussion and/or motion?
Mr. Mayor, make the motion. We approve the consent agenda items as presented.
And a motion from council member Willis to approve the consent agenda items A, B, and C as presented. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I don't think that we had anyone on the phone that was here, so thank you. That carries unanimously for those that are here. Okay, we'll move on then to, we do, well, actually, we do have for requests and petitions of any citizens, if there's anyone here tonight that would like to address the council, this is the time to do so. And we'll open that up. Anyone, no one here with us, but is there, if there's anyone on the Zoom call? Hearing no one. We'll move on then. Tonight, four reports in our boards and commissions, and tonight we will hear from Mr. Rick Oxford, a plant administrator for the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, will hold his second of two public meetings to receive comments regarding the FY 2021 Action Plan for the City of Lenore and the Uniform Home Consortium as part of the five-year consolidated plan as submitted. And this plan is required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, outlines goals and actions for the plan of the City of Lenore and the Uniform Home Consortium, and I'll let you do the rest.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor, members of the council, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, we are here as for our second public meeting regarding the approval and submittal of the city's action plan for FY 2021. Last year, we did a five-year consolidated plan, and that was year one. It included year one action plan. Now, each year, we do another, we do another action plan. So this is actually year two, and so I'll start with the City of Lenore CDBG. The city will, has been notified that they will receive $161,762 for CDBG funds, and we have those budgeted 20% going toward admin and the balance going toward public facilities, which will be a continuation of the CDBG funds we've had the past two years. And that'll be $129,410 for renovations at the old Lenore High School complex, which includes the gym, the auditorium, and Matt Cook Stadium. And we're currently working on that now with our present CDBG funds. Any questions on that? I'm not, not from you.
I support whatever the council does. I defer my questions till I see the attorney.
Oh, no, I'm in trouble. Okay, I'll move on then. With the home program, City of Lenore is the lead entity of the 28-member local government consortium, Unifor Consortium, and this year, we've been notified, we'll receive $1,154,095 from HUD in form of home funds. We anticipate, or we projecting, we'll receive $300,000 in program income for a total of And that, that program income comes to us from, we've made loans throughout the years to multifamily housing developers, and they pay us back annually, and we also receive funds as people sell their properties that we've assisted with down payment assistance, that money comes back into the program, and we just recycle the money. So we have budgeted $605,643 for down payment assistance from the, from the program and another, another $184,591 from program income for down payment assistance. That should allow us to do about 36, 37, maybe 40 homes. We have $30,000 budgeted toward program income administration, so as that money comes back, it creates additional work requirements, and so there's allowable 10% admin on that. We budgeted $173,115 for CHODO. That would be the nonprofit organizations that are doing community housing, community housing development organizations, which are doing housing-related activities. And in the past, we funded the habitats, or most recently, the habitats, but it is open to other applicants as well, as long as they meet the CHODO requirements. And we'll be having a round where we solicit applications from those entities. And we budgeted $229,928 for multifamily housing activities, and this is again where we would loan funds to multifamily housing developers that are doing apartment complexes. Those are typically low-income housing tax credit projects or workforce development projects, and they come to us and ask for some local commitment, and that helps them score well when trying to seek funding from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. And we have a 10% admin budgeted and a 10% contingency fund, all totaling $14,454,095. Any questions?
Mr. Oxford, I have a question.
Okay.
In regards to the funds that you said that go to Habitat, are these funds to individuals that submit an application, or are they to Habitat, and Habitat distributes the money to the applicants?
Okay. It's not necessarily habitats. It is a non, CHODO is a community housing development organization, which is basically a nonprofit organization that is doing some type of housing-related activity. And we have a, we'll send out application forms to all these nonprofits, and they can or cannot submit an application to us. And then we sort of grade those applications, and we see which ones fit the mold that HUD has established best, and then we try to fund those. Most recently, it has been, we fund the habitats because the habitats are, they'll take that money and they will, it will assist them in building a house, and then that house is sold to a low to moderate income household. So end result of the home funds needs to be a home. A home is a good, you know, good thing to, we're looking for an end beneficiary, and the end beneficiary would actually be that person buying the house.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
It's habit. It's just habit.
Yes, habit is making me nervous.
Even though he moved.
Yeah.
Goes to the past.
I like you, Rick.
Thank you. Nice here.
Any comments, Mr. Hildebrand?
I would just mention also that the, the new stimulus money that was approved by Congress has about $4.1 million going to the Unifor area, which we're the lead entity to go back and look at homelessness. And so the Congress leading the effort, we're going to have a meeting in a couple of weeks to come up with some kind of plan for that, and we'll come back at some point with that budget amendment for that. But that include Catawba, Burke, Alexander, and Caldwell County for that, so just want to pass that along.
That's good.
And we don't know the.
We don't know the rules yet.
Don't know the rules and regulations on that, so should be fun.
Okay.
Yeah, I need to submit this application or this action plan to HUD with your approval.
Just hand that to Mr. City Attorney over there, Mr. Rohr.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. And if there's no other questions, then we do need to put this for the council for action. So there would be the FY 2021 Action Plan and the FY 2021 Uniform Consortium Home Plan for approval. This is submitted by Rick Oxford, the plant administrator. So that's the, that's the plans, and tonight was the second of the meeting, so we have fulfilled that. So I'll put this out to the council for your, either any more discussion and/or motion considering this.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the FY 2021 Action Plan as well as the Uniform Consortium Home Plan.
Okay. You heard the motion from council member Perkins to approve the two plans as presented by Mr. Oxford from the Western Piedmont Council of Governments. If no other discussion, we'll call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously.
And we will bring the program ordinances that, the money attached to it next month, so just want to let you know that. This is the plan today.
The money is on the way, huh?
Checks in the mail.
Checks in the mail. Thank you, Rick. Thank you for being with us these last couple of meetings. We appreciate you, working with you and all that you do with the Council of Governments. It's a pleasure to work together. All right, we'll move on then to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, council, a couple items for information this evening. The Planning Board will conduct a virtual meeting on Monday, April 26 at 5:30 p.m. The committee whole will meet next Tuesday in a virtual meeting, April 27, 8:30, and those that attend in person will be third floor City Hall. And then the Foothills Regional Airport Authority will meet in a virtual meeting on Wednesday, April 28 at noon, and I think that's virtual, so it says at the airport facility, but I think it'll be meeting virtually.
And we have been meeting that way, so I don't know if there's any change at this point. We discussed it, but not sure we can.
It's a small meeting room over there. Tonight, we have two items for council action, both of these regarding engineering services agreement. The first one is an agreement with McGill Associates for Water And then the Foothills Regional Airport Authority will meet in a virtual meeting on Wednesday, April 28, at noon. And I think that's virtual, so it says at the airport facility, but I think it'll be meeting virtually.
And we have been meeting that way, so I don't know if there's any change at this point. We discussed it, but not sure we can.
It's a small meeting room over there. Tonight, we have two items for council action, both of these regarding engineering services agreement. The first one is an agreement with McGill Associates for Water Interconnect Project. A little bit of details on that. We're looking at water interconnection, and the cost of that's around $3 million, but what we want you to prove is an engineering agreement to go back and develop an engineering report, survey, design permitting phase, bidding phase, easement survey, and maps. However, the first two phases are the critical part, that gets us started. The projects go forward, we'll go back and, I guess, utilize the other funds. So, the first amount, though it's a total of $194,000, we're just asking right now a commitment to sign the agreement, but we'll only utilize $47,000, the first two phases of that. If the project merits moving forward, we'll go back and try to get funding for that, include the other monies in that project fund. But the first one's the interconnect project, again, roughly $3 million for that. But the contract from McGill would be for $194. Any questions? If not, Rafford Thomas is on the phone as well, that he can give more details.
Okay. Did you see the recommendation? This is only for number one, right?
Correct. And this, part of our risk-resiliency studies looks at the way we can go back and, I guess, mitigate risk for our water system. And this is a way to do that by looking at interconnections, is the possibility of tying to somebody else if something happens to our system. We can go back and have a backup of some sort.
Redundancies.
Yes. And the state's pushing this as well, so this may be a way to get funded.
Yep.
All right, you heard the recommendation from the staff and city manager for the engineering services agreement with McGill Associates for the contract for engineering services with McGill for the Water Interconnect Project. Is there any discussion? Not a need, a motion?
I'll make that motion, please.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Purdue for the engineering services agreement as presented. If no other comments, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Okay.
The second agreement with McGill Associates for engineering services is for the Whitman Water Transmission Main Replacement. This has been our CIP for a number of years. Estimated cost for this phase is little over $5 million. The contract with McGill would be for $270,000. Again, the same type thing, would go back and get a preliminary engineering report, a surveying phase, design permitting phase, bidding award phase, and then if we need easements on that. However, as I said in the first one, we'll only go back, commit right now to $49,000 for the first two phases. If it gets funded and we think it's a legitimate project to move forward with at that time, we'd expend the $270,000. But again, $270,000 now for a $5 million project, Whitman Transmission Line. And again, Rafford Thomas is on the line if you want more details about the project.
Okay, heard the recommendation for
And we talked about this during our budget discussions.
Engineering services agreement with McGill. Any questions or comments from the council? I thought this recommendation from the city manager and staff with approval to enter into the contract for engineering services with McGill Associates for the Whitman Water Transmission Main Replacement. I hear none, I need a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Mayor Pro Tim Thomas to approve the engineering services agreement as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Carries unanimously. Anything else?
That's all I have.
All right.
Well, let me say one thing. I just want to take the opportunity to thank all of our folks last week for the litter sweep. We had over 60 employees and some council members as well go back and pick up litter throughout the community. And I want to thank Joshua Harris, and we've got Jared Wright in the back of the room as well, to coordinate that. And I know the county did that on Saturday, but it made a big difference in the community, and we've got more to do. But appreciate the community coming out to do that, because it means a lot, so.
It was a great call for awareness of what's going on, great turnout, we appreciate that. Jared, I know you did a great job of coordinating, putting together with several other helpers that you had involved, and Joshua, of course, getting all the information out, taking good pictures, we appreciate that. And it was a, it was a fun day. My back and legs hurt, but it was still a fun day to get those things done, so.
Mr. Willis, you can tell the truth about that.
I'm just going to keep my mouth shut. I just remember seeing, I remember seeing these two gentlemen take a left pretty early.
No truth to that whatsoever. We went up to supervise the hot dogs being delivered.
Yeah, that's right. That hurts my knees, too.
But it was a great effort. We appreciate working with the county together on that, great effort from all over, and I hope that will continue. I know we've got a lot, a long way to go, and we've still got a lot of teaching people to quit being litter bugs and throwing things out, and we will keep working on that, so we thank you for all the hard work on that.
Yes, thank you.
Well done. Jared, anything else while you're here with us that you'd like to bring up? Don't want to put you on the spot, but
I just want to echo what Mr. Hildebrand said. I do want to express my appreciation to the council member and staff that participated in the litter pickup event. Joshua, you were instrumental in helping coordinate that, so thank you. 60 folks roughly picked up 150 bags of trash in two hours. That's phenomenal. Of course, there's more to pick up, but I do want to say I appreciate everything that everyone did to participate. Hopefully, this will gain some traction and some momentum, so we won't have to have a dedicated litter pickup day. Instead, the problem will take care of itself if people are just more proactive in the community.
Thank you, we appreciate that. By the way, I picked up two more than Ike Perkins did.
It was on with the bag.
Yes, sir, Mr. Harris.
I'm not sure if you're aware, but while I was driving around, taking pictures and ordering hot dogs and pizzas, Jared and his crew actually walked all up High Brighton Drive, and then we had people walking Fairview Drive and Harrisburg Drive. We had a lot of people go a long way, so.
Yeah, that's great, true.
No lie, I was sore.
Yeah, I believe it.
I grabbed a broom, so I was bending over for a trek.
Oh, yeah. That was amazing. Thank goodness we had a few of those, that's for sure. That was, that was great.
Thank you, Kaylin.
Yeah. That's right. Kaylin Horn directed our group out through there, through town.
Let me borrow her.
And she did a good job with that, keeping us in the right direction, where we're going. So, we appreciate that. Everybody's work on that was great, great to do that. All right, we'll move on then to report and recommendations of our city attorney, Mr. Rohr.
I'll take the report.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate keeping us straight, even though we haven't got a lot going on right at the moment, so that's a good thing.
That's good. The less you have me do is probably the better for the city.
There you go. There you go. As far as my, I don't have anything really to report. At this point in time, we will have some board appointments coming up in the future. We're, it looks like we're going to have a few changes to be made to a couple of boards that are coming, so I will, I will let you know those when that time comes, but don't have anything to report on that now. And everything else, I think, is going very well. Anything for many of our council members to come before us?
I got, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The cleanup effort extended beyond downtown. Pastor Terry Hunt coordinated a crew out on Valway Circle, Valway Street, out in the Valmead Community, and Reverend Rocky Dula coordinated a group on the Miller Hill Road, and I had a group on Broadway from Harper Avenue all the way into the city limits off of Broadway. So, and I just wanted to take this time to thank all of those people for their efforts. So, I didn't only go downtown, we, we were there on Saturday. So, just want to say that the whole city was, hopefully, partially clean now.
That's good, thanks for that.
So, thank all of those guys for their efforts as well.
I saw people at the hall throughout the county on Saturday, it was great. Good to see that.
And I know some of the civic organizations have got some things lined up toward the end of the month, I've seen that they're, they're working on and putting together. I think it's the impact of Rotary Group is going to do some things, I noticed, so it's going to continue through the remainder of April. It needs to be continued through the rest of the year and even beyond that, but at least we're getting some great publicity for it right now and letting people know what it needs to be done. Councilmember Perkins, you want to mention anything about some of the conversations today about the vaccinations and that kind of thing?
Yeah, we had a meeting today with the CEO of Caldwell, West Caldwell Health Council regarding vaccinations, and we are encouraging everyone, if you have not had it, it's very important that you do get your vaccination. If you don't do it for yourself, then do it for your family or for all of those people around you, all the people that you're working with. And we are putting forth an effort to make it convenient for everybody to get your vaccine. Right now, tentatively, we may schedule a mobile vaccinane, vaccination unit in our communities, and we want to do it on a Sunday, where you just come out of church and walk right into the vaccination clinic, too. And we think that would be more helpful if we put that, rather than to have the people to go to where the shops are. We thought it'd be better to bring the shops where the people are at. So, just help us to spread the word and to tell our folks that it's necessary, it's good that you get it to help everybody along this. So, it was a good meeting. Mr. McCrory of Caldwell, West Caldwell Health Clinic is very instrumental in this and helping us to make sure that everybody in Caldwell County and Lenore receives a vaccination.
Great. Good. Good. Good, good, good report on that. Anything else from any of the council members? Mr. Willis, anything out of the league of municipalities that's going on?
Just getting ready for City Vision this week.
Yeah, City Vision is this week, so our brothers will be involved with that. Sorry we couldn't be live where they, where it's going, but
Next year.
Next year, it's set for Wilmington? Is it Wilmington, or is it?
Concord. Remember, we missed, we shuffled it around some
Yeah, we had moved around some, but I'm not sure where it is. But anyway, it's scheduled to be live, if it can be, so we will look forward to that day. All right, anything else to come before us at all? All right, if not, we stand adjourned.